Could I have your attention, please? The Minnesota Water Appeals for the Meeting of March 20th, 2018 is now open.
Mr. Wood?
Present.
Mr. Curley?
Present.
Mr. Cole?
Present.
Mr. Jussono?
Present.
Mr. Callen?
Present. We have a quorum. The first order of business is acceptance of the minutes of the previous motion. A motion is in hand?
So moved.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. First order of business tonight is a... Mr. Cole, can you read that about the 550 Essex Street?
150 Essex Street.
150.
We have a communication on that to our chairperson, Patrick Callen. Dear Mr. Callen, please be advised that the petitioner respectfully requests that this matter be withdrawn without prejudice. Due to other commitments, I am unable to attend your meeting this evening. Thank you for your anticipated cooperation. Very truly yours, John. See my office. Again, this was the case to convert from a two to a three at 150 Essex Street.
And you want to withdraw without prejudice. What is the wish of the board?
Motion to grant and be withdrawn without prejudice.
Aye. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Wood, taken by Mrs. Curley. Please follow.
Mr. Wood?
Mr. Wood, withdraw without prejudice.
Mr. Mrs. Curley?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jussono?
Yes.
Mr. Callen?
Yes. The petitioner has been allowed to withdraw without prejudice. Is there anything else? To continue. Yes. Next case is Eight Winds Avenue, and the petitioner has asked to continue at the next regular meeting. But, please...
She's settled.
Let's see.
She's waiting for...
She's waiting for?
For the lines of air.
Oh, yeah. Okay, wait for...
She's waiting for the lines of air.
To continue petition. I've requested to continue. Hey, oh, Mr. Cole, I'm taking you to...
Yeah, what's our next meeting?
All right, what is the wish of the board in this case?
Motion to let continue Eight Winds Avenue until the April 3 meeting?
Yes.
Second.
Mr. Cole, leave a motion to continue. Mrs. Curley, second. Please follow.
Mr. Wood?
Continue.
Mrs. Curley?
Yes, to continue.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jussono?
Yes.
Mr. Callen?
Yes. Petitioner has been granted to continue. Is that made first of?
Excuse me?
Is that made first of?
Yes.
On the page. Yours.
The next one, I will do. I'm going to continue. Done, made first street, and you have...
Past the street?
Yes.
May it continue?
No, you just continue.
I have these files and I put those... Let's make that. Is it all made first of?
Yeah.
Next case, the scene will be 8 May Fair Street. This was continued to so that the plot could be laid out. That's all for... I thought you had before you explained the board with photographs on that.
Yes, I provided Mary... I knew because of the snow cover. I provided Mary with a plan where the proposed stakes were, but then we have a photograph that highlights where the stakes are. I don't know...
The stakes are in there. I was up there.
Yeah. So, you've got that, and then this is Mr. Reed signed the plan.
It's laid out nicely.
Canelo's due on Friday, so she's not here, to my belief.
She's due on Friday?
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
Any... Anyone have any questions on Mr. Vitali?
I know Mr. Cole had a question about the hydrant, and I just wanted to point out, if you look at the plan, this 24 feet on that side...
Yeah.
I can't ballpark, but two things. If you look at the plan, the hydrant doesn't show on the plan, but it does show on the photo. And this is the property line over here.
Okay.
Mr. Reed showed on the plan the cars side by side, but there's plenty of room with 24 feet to put a single driveway...
Oh, absolutely.
And have five feet and then have the...
Can I see that for a second?
Yeah.
I'm just curious. I'd rather see it. Yeah, I'd rather see it.
And it was Reed that did the plan where to put the hydrant?
Yeah, so it is there. I mean, it's...
Oh, yeah, no, there's no question that's the hydrant.
Right in the driveway. Yeah.
But I think if you mark, you'll see the property lines are marked.
Property line is the...
And then the second question is, if you've been to the road, you know, it goes up until a sort of... And that picture sort of reflects, it goes up to an area that's like a ledge and cliff with a height that's like 20 feet up.
Yeah.
And the last thing is that I talked to Costas about, and we talked to Councilor Lozzi about, is that you see the area you're in the lot right now?
That's it, you know?
Yeah. If you just... I just wanted to point out, he says that right now, it isn't that people go this way. Nobody drives down the street this way. But what's actually happened is that people have driven through his yard that way.
To go to Maryland Court, or...
To go to Maryland Court. Right.
Wait a minute. Wait a minute. Wait a minute, please.
His petitioner.
Yeah, I know that. Let's let Mr. Vitali finish.
So, the construction of our house would obviously stop people from driving that way?
Okay.
Which has happened on two or three occasions?
Yeah, no, I was just gonna...
Just identify yourself for the record.
Yes, oh, my name is Costas Blissmus. I live at David Makers.
You are a petitioner?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
I'm a petitioner. I just wanted to pick you back up for Mr. Vitali was there. Just with finishing the road of petitions, also for people cutting through our backyard to avoid the traffic on Euclid Ave, they cut through around the corner and drive down the driveway.
Yeah.
I've also had to call the cops around 3:00, 4:00 in the morning. I've had 3:00, 4:00 pickup trucks.
All right. All right. What we have before us now is this plan. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone have any questions?
No, I just... I know you talked to Councilor Lozzi about it. Was everything straightened out with Mr. Lozzi? He wasn't sure of the area initially?
Well, yeah, if you look on the... Again, I had provided the board with this in the past. The registered land plan has this portion as a private way. He was concerned about Lockdale, which is parallel and perpendicular to this property. That exists. So, the only people that have been doing the shortcuts have been going that way.
Do you have new glasses?
I think I do, yeah.
You do?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will have a jury.
Thank you, Mr. Vitali. Public hearing is over.
And I will leave that with you.
What is the wish of the board?
I make a motion to grant.
Motion made by Mr. Curley is granted.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Wood. Please follow.
Mr. Wood?
Yes, sir.
Mrs. Curley?
Yes, to grant.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jussono?
Yes.
Mr. Callen?
Yes, to grant. Petitioner has been granted by you in that role.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. The baby.
He wanted to bring good news to his wife.
Thank you.
All right, next case is 330 Boston Street. Public hearing is now one for... Please state your name and address.
Fred Manigat, 9 Slogan Road, Jericho Plain. The address in question is 330 Boston Street.
Yes.
Yes. I'm representing the owner.
Oh, yeah. So, what is your name again for the record?
Oh, Fred Manigat. M.A.N.I.G.A.T.
And what are you, the builder? What's your...
I'm the architect.
The architect?
Yes.
All right.
My personal address, 9 Slogan Road, Jericho Plain, Boston... Jericho Plain, yes.
Okay, you have the floor to make your presentation.
Okay, great, thank you. I think I wasn't here last time, but according to my client, last time, there were some questions about needing to represent exactly the existing floor plans because you guys were not able to see how many bedrooms were existing.
Right.
So, I took...
Is there any way you can hold that up so that...
Yes, and I also have some small... Some small, if you want to look at them.
Go a little farther closer.
Only got three there. I will hold it up. I will hold it up.
Better hold that up so they can see it.
Yeah. I'll pull up some... Pull up some. They have an extra problem here. So...
You want to copy the only way?
Thank you.
Okay, I'll see that.
It's the same here, right? Yeah, it's the same. You can follow on your sheet. What's it going to be? Are you looking here? So, do you want me to give you the description of the work being proposed? Okay, so, I think the work being proposed is to create a query from a... To create an alloy unit on the third floor, and we've provided a stair on the front to get to the first floor, and you can see a representation of it on the elevation. And we're also providing a fire escape in the back to get out in case of emergency. So, the work...
Yeah, but wait a minute. We asked that that be enclosed, right?
So, right now, what I've shown is I've had it as a covered... As a covered fire escape.
Enclosed. Remember we said enclosed?
Enclosed.
Enclosed.
Okay.
That's different than covered.
Yes. Yes, well, I guess right now, the way I have designed it is there's a roof on it.
No. I start directly. You're wasting your time.
No, no, no. I would just explain to you that we can easily turn this into a covered, into an enclosed space.
Enclosed.
Yes.
That was the request of the board.
Okay.
Right? Or whatever that...
Okay.
Okay, so, okay.
Yes.
You can go ahead with your presentation.
Yes. So, I mean, basically, as I said, and the other change is on the first floor, the owners are looking to put either to put another bath. There's a space right now that's kind of a small room that's empty. They want to turn that into a bath.
I see.
Yeah.
And that's it.
That's it. That's all the work that's happening. And, well, I mean, of course, we converted the third floor into a unit for we have in the kitchen, the bathroom.
Yeah. Now, you can say you're an architect, but I don't see an architect stamp on each.
Well, because this is not being sent to the building department yet.
When you come here with a plan...
Yes.
We want to see... I asked you, when we... As you said, you're the architect.
Yes, I am.
Usually, they have that stamp, messages, a stamp on the plan.
Yes.
For us.
Yes. And I want to explain this because I have my driver... I have my license right here, so I can give it to you.
No, no, do you have your stamp with you?
I do have it in my car. I can go get it. But usually, the reason why these are not stamped, I mean, they're different. You should have the different...
Go ahead, I'm going to explain, but we don't accept... We don't accept that.
Well, I wasn't... These weren't being submitted for permit. I thought this was for just for this presentation. When I give the...
When you show up at a hearing like this...
Okay.
We, if we accept it, we stamp it.
Well, I can go right to my client with my stamp.
You have to listen to me.
Yes.
It's going to be shorter than we had other people.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely.
Yeah. I'm just trying to tell you what the procedure is, and it is in the application that you have the stamps in the plan.
Okay.
We can approve of it without that, but you would have to do that.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. And I was... I just wanted to...
No, no, I really got a license.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to be sure that I'm not representing someone else's work. You know, this is my work. This is my speech. Okay, but, yeah, and if you want me to... Yes. I just want... I did not realize that was the case.
I'm saying, if this is we can't stamp our stamp...
Yeah.
It's yours.
I got it. I got it.
If it is approved.
Yes, yes. And if you guys want, willing to approve it tonight, I'll go get my stamp and come right back and deal.
Anyone else have any questions here?
Is it going to be three bedrooms on the first floor and three bedrooms on the second?
Right now, there are no bedrooms on the first floor.
I know that.
Yes. And we're not changing that.
Oh, there's going to be no bedrooms on the first floor?
There are no bedroom on the first floor. On the second floor, there are three bedrooms, and that's staying that way. In the third floor, currently, there are... Actually, there are two rooms in the third floor that they're converting into bedrooms, and we adding a kitchen and a bath.
So, how many bedrooms altogether? Five?
There'll be five, five bedroom altogether.
How many are there in the office?
Three.
In the office?
It says here the second floor has...
Well, if you can see the office, you have to cross through the office to get to the bedroom, so they could never turn that into a bedroom.
No.
You know, because it doesn't have its own entrance.
So, on the first floor, there's going to be no bedrooms at all still?
No, there will be no bedrooms.
All right. So, the four bedrooms that are now on the second floor are going to be three bedrooms for the first floor?
You mean to say the first unit?
For the first unit.
Yes.
And the other bedroom is going to be what?
The other unit is going to be two bedrooms.
So, what is going on on both sides?
So, the one bedroom that's on the second floor that's left is going to be two bedrooms?
No, there are no bedrooms left on the second floor.
Well, if you've got four bedrooms on the second floor now, and three of them are going to go to the first unit, what is the other one? Is that a bedroom?
No, it's not. It's an office. I think it's...
All right. This is what I'm asking you.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
I'm only reading what's here.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I think it's mislabeled in the record as a four-bedroom building. It's really a three-bedroom building. I walked through it. There are no closets in there, and you have to go through it to get to another bedroom. So, it doesn't... You can't really consider it a bedroom.
Any other questions of the petitioner? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else here in favor of this petition? Anyone else here in favor of this petition? Here none of... Here for those opposed. Anyone here opposed to this petition? Anyone here opposed to this petition? Here none opposed to hearing. What is the wish of the board?
Motion to deny. Grounds of lack of hardship.
Motion denied. Okay, wait a few seconds. If there's no second, we'll...
I'll second it.
Mr. Cole, second. Motion made by Mr. Jussono, seconded by Mr. Cole to deny the petition. Please follow.
Mr. Wood?
Yes, to deny.
Mrs. Curley?
Yes, to deny.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jussono?
Yes.
Mr. Callen?
Yes, to deny. Petitioner has been denied.
Can I say something?
Sure.
So, when the client brought me in, I was told that the only concern was the back stair and the fact the floor plans were not showing the number of bedrooms. I did not know that there was an issue with hardship.
There is with every case that comes before us.
Yeah.
Every case.
Yeah, but I mean, I know that, but I'm saying, but I did not hear that that was something that was under consideration.
Doesn't have to be written down. That's always part of it. Plus, they didn't have the enclosure.
Well, we...
No. Let me explain. The floor design has been taken. We have to move on. But you will get notice of the decision. Whether a decision will be made up, and you will be able to read it.
I'll decide historically whether we tend to accrue increases inside the number of properties in the building in a dense neighborhood. I'm just saying that historically.
Yeah, well, you know, this is a big lot, the plenty of parking.
Hearing is over. Thank you for your presentation. Next case, the name is number 9 Green Street. Mr. Cole, you can read it.
Sure, I'd be glad to. Case number 9816, 9 Green Street. Petitioner, Fidelina Garcia, to allow construction of a second-floor addition for office commercial use to an existing non-conforming structure and zoning district business having insufficient frontage.
Thank you, Mr. [inaudible]. Public hearing is now over. Those in favor, please give your name. For the record, give your name and address.
My name is Marcos Devers. Marcos A. Devers. I'm a professional engineer.
That's your occupation. What's your address? Address?
Yes, the address is 16 Woodland Street in Prospect Hill, Lawrence, Massachusetts.
Okay, and you are a professional engineer?
I am a professional engineer with over 30 years of experience.
Okay, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Yes, as you mentioned, this is an application for add a second-floor finished office and commercial space in order to complement the type of use that they have in the first floor. The use in this first floor has been for 50 years, 46 years, owned by a nanny perhaps, and his name, that had it for 46 years. His name is Lenny.
Lenny Lee.
Lenny Lee.
Exactly. And they bought it four years ago, and they feared that they would be uncomfortable, it would be healthier for them.
Excuse me, you have a petitioner?
Yes.
Yeah. State your name and address.
Fidelina Garcia. My address, 51 Green Street, Lee, Massachusetts.
Yeah, you have that, yeah.
So, you live on the street, we have work?
Yes.
You can walk to work.
You make it clear.
Three minutes, two minutes, one.
Thank you, sir. So, as you can see, that's the purpose, just to add an office, a lobby, and a storage area on the second floor so that they could serve in a way that the staff in the office could have a healthier environment on the second floor than being close to the body shop. And that's the main purpose. We would like to show some renderings that indicate the way it's going to look. This is an example. Obviously, according to the zoning requirements, we actually, the proposal complies with most of the zoning dimensional requirements.
These photos show the finished product, right?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So, this is how it looks now in the winter weather. So, it's going to change, obviously. So, as I was saying, according to the table of dimensional requirements, it complies with most of those requirements in terms of the height, in terms of the space. It does not comply with the frontage. Obviously, this is an unconforming structure, and to our changes of the ordinances, it's been like that. And we respectfully ask you for approval so that this agreement will continue being trusted with this.
All right. Does anyone have any questions on the petitioner's representation?
The floor, what is going to look like? The way, what the space is going to be used for inside?
Don't you have those topics?
I have another.
No?
No, no, how are you going to look inside? I think you had it. I'm sorry, sir.
What are you looking for?
That, that is?
You have those floor planes in the sky?
Yes, yes.
He hasn't, no.
You hide it.
Does this picture show what the back of the building is now? I thought the back of the building was... It was connected to the store.
Yeah.
But it was... It's all connected, right? I mean, I drove all the way back there, and it was...
That's where you got it.
It was touching the building.
No, no. It's not. He's in that circle. He's about 33.
Yeah, but I drove back here. I could come all the way back, and I could see that the building came out, and the back was blocked like this to here. There was another building right next to it. I was wondering if there was a drawing to the building.
Yes, it's true. They had it being closed right here.
So, this doesn't actually show what's there?
Yes. That's a funny about things from here to down the building.
But I was back there. It was touching.
Yes, a little, yes.
Oh, so you do it differently?
How many square feet is the car building?
So, this doesn't actually show what's there?
Yes.
That's the point about temporary framing of the other building.
But I was back there, it was touching.
Yes, a little, yeah.
You do it differently. How many square feet is the current building?
Uh, when, you know, you gotta address the board. Let's not have a private meeting up there.
I have some questions.
No, I understand, but no one's paying attention. They're talking to each other.
Thank you.
So, if he can answer, can you answer Mr. Wood's question?
Actually, I was just refreshing my mind in terms of the width by the length, that the square footage gave. That was his question. So, looking for it.
Does that answer your question?
No, no, my associate designer is looking for it.
So, that's how it is now? That's how it is now? Does that help?
Yeah. Just the back is different than what they- You got 22 hundred square feet of floor.
22.
Per floor.
Yes.
Is the upstairs gonna be the same as the downstairs?
Yes.
Because it extends out on the back, and if you're gonna extend the upstairs over the dead?
No.
The front stairs are the same.
Stay the same. Just maybe on top of what exists. That's it.
You build on top of the cement wall.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I just got a question. But this, this building pretty much takes up the entire existing lot. The building takes- I was, because when you, when you look at it, I thought that on the left-hand side, it actually, is that a public way, gives him place? Is that, the driveway that you used, the roadway that you used to get into the back of your building, is that a public, is that a public?
The street coming right away to my building and the other buildings.
Excuse me, you have to identify yourself in the record. Want to come up with it, you wanna? Yeah, but we have to know who's talking around here. Come on up.
Yeah, keep coming. And then keep coming, and keep repeating his name, and whatever.
Yeah, yeah, give me your name.
Yeah, my name is Mr. Ian. My name is Ian.
It touches.
And your address?
And we own, we own a-
We have been here for a record, you know?
51 Green Street.
All right. Do you have something to add?
No, just-
No, I just had a question. This is a public way that you used to get to the back of your building, right? Who owns this land back here? Mr. Chairman.
That's the, uh-
This is the front of the building here. This is the back.
I own the back.
You own this?
Yeah.
It touches the other building.
You own the town.
See, the building always got here.
No, just give it, that's all.
This is Green Street.
See, this thing here comes out, that's from the-
Yeah. So, you own, you own that a separate one here?
Yes.
It's touching. So, I wondered, is the addition that go for this thing to-
The parking.
Or just to get a picture of that thing?
No, where's the other picture?
This is the, this is the-
When you, when you show the-
This is the new picture, it's not over it.
And I started up. Oh, okay, yeah. Not over. Yeah, you're right, okay, that does answer it. He didn't tell you it's at the same footprint, but that's just, it's not. Is that?
We have to get the, we have to get the record space for who's buying.
What he's talking about, Dick, this is the pieces in the van.
Yeah.
Not the same footprint, really, because this is still like this.
Yeah.
That's what he means.
Yeah. What, what, this gentleman was talking, there's a bug head in the back. Bug head, right?
Yeah, it touches the-
It's a pump plant.
It touches the other building, this thing here. The other building goes right up to that. You can see it on that plan there. The Ralph Reed's drawing. Where's Ralph's drawing?
Right here.
Yeah, so it's touching the other building.
Yeah.
No, it's not touching, no. It's separate. Maybe in the big-
Maybe an inch or two.
Yes.
I drove back, I'm sorry.
But you see some actual encroachment, and being honest, that's the way the last survey indicated in the, in the floor plan.
Yeah.
And that is something that exists. That's a non-conformal situation that had existed for 50 years.
Sure is.
Yeah, I just wondered about it. It just seems-
But it's not, it's not a parking of a building. It's not touching a building. They actually, they actually, um-
You couldn't, you couldn't put your hand through it. It's, it's very tight now, eh?
How come he's saying-
This thing right here. There's the other building here. So, I drove back here, and you can see this, this bump out here. That's another building.
Okay, you're talking about this addition here?